2019 Planning Commission meeting. Shayna, can I get a roll call vote?
Mr. Wodyska?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Terrific. Mr. Puente is absent. Can I get someone to make a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So move.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. That passed unanimously. We have no speakers. I will request if we have any petitions for items not on the agenda. That's not surprising. Alright, the first item is the election of the officers. We have a procedure in place here that I have been instructed as how we do it. I'm going to call for nominations. Any member may make a nomination, which must be seconded. After all nominations are made, the chair requests a roll call vote. If more than one member is nominated, then the members vote by stating the name of the commissioner they are voting for. If no nominee receives a majority of the votes, then the election must be repeated. Alright. As those are the rules, I ask or call for any nominations.
Before we do nominations, I'd like to make a motion that basically, I'll describe real quickly. So, we've got the West Falls Church Economic Development Project going on and the new high school. And these are both probably the largest projects in the city's history and will have a big impact on the community for decades. And I think consistency in leadership through that process is important. So, I would like to move that the Planning Commission suspend the rules of procedure related to term limits for the position of chair for this calendar year. It will kick in again next year. That's my motion, which hints at who do I nominate for chair.
Alright. Any discussion on that motion? Everybody understand what the motion is? Alright, terrific. Then can I get a roll call vote on that?
I do like, I'd like to make one comment though. In general, I'm okay with this. I'm gonna vote for it. But I do think it's a slippery slope. And so, while I vote for it this year, I wouldn't vote for it in the second year. Because I do think that the procedural rule set up that chair turns over every two years is actually a good rule. And it has done well for the commission to have that turnover. Because sometimes it's good to have different people look at things. But I understand in this case, it's a good reason to do it since we're in the middle of such large projects. But I do also think that every planning commissioner should really try to take a moment to be either vice chair or chair. Because it's helpful to have that leadership role changed. So you get some different viewpoints in those positions. And also, I just, I think it's a good thing for everyone to have that opportunity to run the meetings. Because it builds leadership skills, you know, for the future. Anyway, but that's all I wanted to say. So I'm okay with it now, but I just don't want to see us try to have to do that again.
Well, thank you. Let me just say that this was something that I have talked to all of you about. These are big projects that I've put a lot of energy and time into. And I think they're in a state where it is beneficial to have this kind of continuity. So I really do appreciate greatly that, to all those who are gonna support this, that this gives me an opportunity to continue that work over the next year. I do not intend to be the chair next year. This is a one-year suspension, just to finish this work, I believe, by the end of this year.
Yeah, I think if the work's not finished by the end of the year, we'll be looking for a new chair.
That's a very good point, Mr. Rankin.
But I do appreciate the willingness to suspend the term limit piece on this. So, if there's no other discussion, then we can take a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Wodyska?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Great. Now, I would call for nominations for the chair.
Go back to the chair, yeah?
Yeah, well, that was just a motion to suspend the term limit piece.
With that discussion, and I think, I know, I have talked with the current chair. And I feel very confident that it's a good decision to keep that continuity on those projects. Therefore, I will move that we nominate, Mr. Wodyska deserves our chair for 2019.
And I will greatly second that happily.
Terrific. Any discussion on that?
You've got too much knowledge going.
Alright, can we do another roll call vote on this nomination?
Mr. Wodyska?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Again, thank you guys very much. Alright, we'll move to a nomination of the vice chair. Does anybody have a nomination they'd like to make? Alright, well then, I'd like to nominate Mr. Rankin again. This actually position does not have a term limit. But I think he's done really a wonderful job.
Perpetual vice chair.
You could be perpetual vice chair per our rules and procedures. But we will be addressing those later.
We're gonna stop that from happening.
Maybe this is a one-year deal.
Well, I'm sorry.
We're gonna give you lots of duties.
Well, I'll second that nomination.
Terrific.
But we'll fix that problem in the future.
Are there any other nominations anyone would like to make?
Did we second it? Yeah, we seconded it. Got it.
Are there any other nominations anyone would like to make? Alright. Final roll call vote on this?
Mr. Wodyska?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Alright, great. Okay. Again, thank you. Alright, we're moving on to then, now the rules of procedure. And this is a discussion point. I'm bringing it up here. Bear with me. Well, I think we should have a conversation about, a brief conversation. We did talk about it in December. But this, there's not only a conversation about needing to do this, but it, there's so many elements that need to be reviewed. The staff has suggested that we put together a two-person sort of work group, as it were, to go through outside of this meeting and talk about how we can, what we can cut out, what we don't want to cut out, how we can change it. And why can't I find this? You have so many attachments this evening, I might add.
Some are short.
So did everybody get a chance to take a look at the markup?
Absolutely, yeah.
And we wanna start by having a conversation about what you, what your thinking was. I know, again, we talked about last month, but it's fairly comprehensive, the markup. Do you think, let me just rephrase that. Do you think there are certain items we should discuss? Or should we turn this over to a committee to work on it? Because, you know, virtually every page of this 26-page document had major adjustments. And I think just, it naturally became bloated over time. We kept throwing more things in it. I've been on the commission 11 years and we, I've never seen us reduce anything. It's just add, add, add. I think now's the time to take that look. And the staff has already sort of taken a first cut at it and begun to pare it down. I think after these changes, this document will be half the length, for sure.
I didn't see anything in the markup that I disagreed with. So I think we could go to a small task force. I mean, there's nothing I need to discuss out of the markup from this point either.
I didn't either, but, yeah, I did. I saw some interesting things that, you know, we kind of touched base off and off and on over the year. Yeah, I was surprised, you know, just reflecting and not realizing, again, we're going back to this document that they were in there. For instance, the proffer, the suggestions to city council, which we really have not made that much of a thing to it, you know. You know, we've never used that too often. And then some other things. And I'm sure there's lots of happiness about the, not after 10:30.
We don't always follow that, but it's good to do it, isn't it? No, I think, I think it's good that we do. And I think that it's, first of all, we should, and I think over the years, there've been some changes in like state code that probably informed some of these changes. But we should probably look, starting point at current state code. And as far as, you know, whatever guidance it does, you know, it provides. Some of the things that sort of have to be in there. And make sure everything in here is consistent with that. And then look at the other stuff and see, right, how much of it is, you know, needs to be in there or not.
Yeah, one of the high level questions I had was, because I just, I think, was these, are these your comments most of all? Which, which was like, hey, this is in the state code, or this can't be overwritten by the rules. Which I think is vows, is redundant. But it did have me wondering if some of that, like, part of me feels like, hey, you should go sit down, look at the rules of procedure and get a sense for what the planning commission does and doesn't do. And, and so, if it literally doesn't say, it just says that we follow the state code and then we do these other things, it might make it hard. So I was trying, I was thinking there should be a balance. There's definitely some stuff where it's like gobs of details, which is like, no, that's state code. But some of like the high level things of what we do, even though we, our rules and procedures can't change that, I wondered if we should keep some of those in there so that somebody who's interested could just kind of peruse through here, realizing all the details are in the state code. But I don't, you know what I mean, some sort of balance between us.
Absolutely.
And that's maybe some of the task word, task force duo could figure out, but.
Right, I think that was, one of the things that was in the spirit of the markup is, do the rules of procedure, one, provide the planning commission and the staff the guidance needed to operate the group. But two, does it help someone who is trying to follow the business of the group understand what's happening? So in some cases, I think there were recommendations where I said, you know, you ought to keep this even though, it's a, but make it clear that you're paraphrasing, or you're quoting, or you're copying.
Yeah.
Make sure you're not confusing it as if it's something defined by the rules of procedure.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, maybe make it clear, like, per state code, we do these things. Per our rules, we also do these things. So, that'd be cool. But yeah, right now, it is, you can see that it's just been globbed on to over the years and.
Did you have a timeframe for how long the two-person group would meet?
Yeah, in looking at this, there are some things that were identified as procedural. The comment was made that things get added over the years. And sometimes that was because there are under-defined procedures, right? The substance may be defined in code, but not the process. And so sometimes the rules and procedures have defined that process. So the idea was, if the two-person team can work with staff and bring a recommendation back at the February 19 meeting, that'll be enough time to weigh in on some of the questions, identify what needs to be kept versus what could be referenced. And also confirm with staff in different program areas that this isn't eliminating anything that's being used on a day-to-day basis.
I'm happy to serve on this two-person committee. This was something that I had asked Paul to look into in the first place. I don't have any strong, you know, need to do it. If there's other people who feel more strongly, I will certainly step aside on this. But I am happy to volunteer myself on this piece. If, but I do need one more person to discuss it and spend time.
I'm happy to do it. No one else is. I probably am.
Does anybody have a strong opinion about it? I mean, plenty just volunteered, Tim, but, Tim, is that something you want to do?
Well, I mean, if Tim didn't, I'm happy to do it too. But if Tim would love to do it, then he got it.
Wouldn't quite use the word "love."
But you asked the first question.
I thought Andy asked a question.
Another thing in this, that there are a couple of things that I do think are really good reminders to pitch in the face with every once in a while. Hey, that's our role and that's something we should always be considering. And I thought particularly way at the end in the state code, the natural environment, protecting the natural environment heritage. Thought that was excellent. That was line 1060, 1062. And the other one was interrelatedness of decision and long-term consequences. Think those are all, something that the planning commission should be asking of themselves with every decision that's made. Because I think that's extremely important, particularly in our small little area. And the other thing with proffers, I think, I think we should have more ability to offer some suggestions to council on changes of proffers.
Alright. Do you two want to do it, or you want me to be a part of it? It doesn't matter to me. Listen, this is something right up your alley, actually, I think. But you don't have to be involved if you want to.
I mean, that's why I said, I don't mind doing it, because I kind of do this for work sometimes, so.
How about this? How about the three of us do it? And if someone's absent, then we can.
Have to advertise.
I'll be the extra.
Do you have to advertise? Oh, for less.
That's what staff.
Never mind, never mind, never mind.
Why don't you attempt to do it?
You're gonna have two to staff.
Alright, Tim and I will take the first cut at it.
Yeah, go ahead. And then, I mean, because it's not like I can't tear it apart later.
We're just coming back with recommendations on February. Okay, that's Tim and I. And you and I can figure out the scheduling. Alright. Next item is the approve the annual report to city council. We again saw this last year, last December. And the format of this is tremendous.
It's phenomenal.
Such a great improvement over what it was before.
It seems exciting now.
It does.
Our past reports looked so boring.
And the pictures and all the votes included and everything. I just thought it was a real, really great document. I was just like, whoa.
Yeah, it does.
Awesome.
It does jump off.
Awesome. You're welcome.
I like the picture showing we have an actual audience sometimes.
Oh, yeah. And Andy wasn't in here at one time?
The one in EMS.
I know, you were really good this year.
I just thought that was a beautiful report.
It really was. It doesn't, it breaks it up into pieces as opposed to like chronological. It does go chronological then piece. So that's just a different way to view it. But it focused on the capital improvement plans and then the special exceptions and things like that. So I thought this was easy to follow, but it did not go like our old reports. So it's a big change. I don't know.
First time we've ever had votes included.
No, I thought we'd had votes in the past.
Really?
Because people would go through if they were absent.
Yay, nay.
Talk about it. But, you know, I think it's, it works better this way by clustering it by subject matter. So I think it's a little more clearer of the work that was done. Because before, you're just kind of reading, then this, and this, and this. And now you see all these things were done in this area. And like having all the speakers together, it's just more coherent that way.
Yeah, no, I actually really like it. We all settled the whole document pops out. It's just, the big change to me is, in addition to that visual part, is really that it's not chronological. It just doesn't go, and then on this date, we did this, and on, you know, March, we did this. That's the way it used to be.
It is project oriented.
Yeah, I don't have any real comments about this, other than, you know, praising you for the work that you guys did.
And then do you present this to city council?
I do. Do I have like a slot? Typically, they say this meeting, we've allocated, you know, 10 minutes for people to give their annual reports.
Yeah, I want to jump in and use that opening to say, one, there was an error in copying. And Shayna Schaefer obviously should have had an author credit in the staff report since she's the one who authored the entire report. Thank you, Shayna.
Please give her credit.
The other, Commissioner Stevens, you had caught an error on page eight last time. And that was corrected, but the version that got posted was the incorrect format. Shayna caught that and she's fixed that as well. So I think we just want to make sure that when we make the motion to adopt, it's the corrected version per page eight. It's the vote tallies on the B2 text amendment. Let's see, then the last thing. Ah, yes, your actual question. The tentative dates for presentation to council, I think there are two tentative dates. And they were?
February 11th or 25th.
Okay. I will, I'll let you know shortly. Do we meet on any of those? Because I know we're doing some CIP. That's our CIP.
No, the CIP is scheduled to occur on regular meeting days in February for the planning commission. At this time, no special meetings are intended. So the 11th and 25th are the planning commission's off weeks.
Alright, I mean, I'll tell you which one, and let me just look at my calendar. But in CIP, in the past, we've met in between, like a special work session. Based on the way we're trying to handle this one, maybe we can avoid that interim meeting since we're gonna try to give guidance as to what we need to talk about. But I'll let you know on this, I'll let staff know which one works better, the 11th or the 25th.
Lots of luck with summarizations.
There is included in the report, there is a placeholder for the commission on page 12.
So if you guys want to go to page 12 on your report, it's an exciting page. It says nothing.
That's what it's like.
It says.
Well, that's exciting. Never mind.
To be discussed, what our recommendation and priorities for 2019 are.
Sorry, if I could, this is a tactic that the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, the CACT, has started using in recent years. A way of saying, you know, what's that short list of requests in the back pocket? So oftentimes, these annual reports are met with a lot of support. And council says, how can we help you? And so it's helpful to have that list predetermined. And you know that there's a consensus of the group pushing forward on those three, five, six items, whatever it is.
And it's funny, I was gonna share those tonight because I just attended the CACT meeting. Just as an example, I'll tell you, this is what they said their goals were for 2018. 19. One was to get the transportation for the George Mason High School campus in Weston Projects correct. Talking about the grant and just making sure the flow is gonna be right for those projects. They want to do another walk or bike to school day. They want to do another parking day where, you know, where they take over a parking space and make it into a fun place. They want to do a bike rodeo and a TOPS event. They want to plan a family social bike ride. They want to administer, evaluate, and refine the neighborhood traffic safety program. So they're looking, they're in the middle of refining and trying to change some of the way it's done. They're trying to make it work better. They've been, actually, you know, there was kind of a hold on this for a while. Because there went a lot of funding, and now they have funded, and they've actually done a few. And so now they've learned something from doing them. And they're gonna go back and try to refine that process to make it work better. So that's really their big thing. They also want to recommend improved lighting in the city. They don't feel like the lighting in the evening is comprehensive enough for people in terms of walking and biking and feeling safe at night. That there's, there's holes in the city in some of the areas, commercial areas that where people would normally want to be walking that may not feel safe right now.
That's for comments along that line.
Yeah, so that's a big project for them is that they're looking at the walkability, bikeability in terms of lighting. Feeling safe, those, those. So those were like their, their big goals that they have on there.
And nothing on parking?
Um, no.
Do we have goals that we want to, I mean, I jotted some notes down, but they were, they were quick. They were not, I want to see if anybody had real priorities that they think that we should include in this. I mean, I think this is a little premature in the sense that I think this is what we talk about at our retreat. But if there were things that we wanted to include on this, this is a good opportunity. It's consistent. The staff is recommending it. I don't have a problem with it. Does anybody have any priorities they really want to?
I mean, it would make sense to look at our, whatever it's called, the thing we track all the priorities we set last year and see if some bubble up. I know we have the paper streets and the whatever.
That would make a lot of sense. I did not do that for my quick list.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'd have is the paper streets, Greenway Downs.
Greenway Downs, forever. I'm so tired of that.
I know, but it's still something I need.
I know, it needs to be done.
Is this a, this is like priority, we would say?
Yeah, you keep saying.
A sore spot.
I still think that we continue, we need to continue to look in at parking. Looking at the ordinance involved in it. I mean, I know we've made some changes and things, but, but I still think it's not quite working. I also wonder if we can't do something to promote shared parking better than we are right now. There's a lot of parking in the city. But quite a bit of it is wrapped up with different rules on who can park there and who cannot. So it doesn't allow for the flexibility that we could use right. I mean, it's really kind of, you know, you'll see a bunch of parking that's empty because no one needs that parking right now.
And that's part of the, one of our attachments from the CACT was about parking.
Right, and that was very well done with some good ideas.
Yeah. I know that's something that Councilwoman Hardy's been hot on too. But I still, I still think that we're, if there's a possibility of reviewing, maybe how parking is being handled in other places that have better tools than we have. I just don't think we don't have all the tools that we need. Because.
I guess the ones that I would suggest are the two comprehensive plan updates that we have to make sure those get completed successfully this year.
Those are good ones.
Are these?
Just for clarification, there are actually three that are in progress.
You're right.
Environment, demographics, and housing.
So those three plus area plans, you know?
And are these priorities, well, recommendations, but priorities that we're trying to convey specifically to city council? I mean, this is where I'm wondering, is this, you know, last time we talked about this and we complained about Greenway Downs and Paper Streets. And I was like, what do we actually do? And it was sort of like, I don't know, do some survey and then go to city. Like, is this a place to put a stake in the ground, say, city council? Hey, this year, we're gonna do these two things or whatever. And we expect you guys to, to help us out, get that done? Or is this more like internal to us, our priorities? Because to me, like, the chapters of comprehensive plan, I think those will get through. I don't think city council will, will hold us up. But I have no reason to think that the Greenway Downs or Paper Street will get done this year. Because why would it? It's never gotten done before. So to me, if this is strategic to emphasize to city council, I would pick different things than if it's just our internal priorities. Because I feel like we can deal with that at the retreat.
There should be some cross cooperation.
Well, I guess if you're looking at it from a council, from like what we need to work with council, then it is the area plans and the three comprehensive plan chapters more than anything else.
Yeah, but those things are gonna get, I mean, they'll, we, I don't think we've had problems getting those things, getting council to pay attention to those things.
We have had times. We've had them done and we've had to wait to get on to the agenda.
It seems like if we don't push it, the council is not gonna necessarily say where they're, where they at.
Yeah, I mean, my view, I'm not sure this document's gonna do any pushing. If there's gonna be pushing, it's gotta probably come from me, honestly.
It's a gold pushing.
I'd like to see.
Is your sense that these, this is our annual report? It does go to council, just to tell them what we've done. But is your view, it's our internal goals, our, like, our, our goals as a planning commission or goals that we are trying to work with city council on?
I think there, there are two things. I think you mentioned earlier that the commission hasn't yet developed a tangible work plan. And I think that will happen later in advance. And that may include 10, 12, 14 items that the commission can advance with limited interaction with council. Or maybe substantial interaction with council. If there are things that need council action and council time and council agenda slots, I think, I think this priority list is where to say that. So if a small area plan is gonna need two, three, four sessions with council in a calendar year, I think this is the place to make that pitch.
Maybe it's a two-part process, is we put them in here and then we can submit a letter to the council after our retreat and say, we've had our own retreat and these are the things that we think are important and you should be aware of them. I don't think we've ever followed up our retreat with a letter of saying, this is the progress we made and this is the things that are important to us, just to keep them abreast, kind of, you know, mid-year. I know that's gonna happen earlier in the, earlier in the year. But we can do that as well. Again, I jotted a few ideas down. I'm not just saying these are the ones we should have in there, because I didn't look at it from this standpoint. I thought about it more as our own goals. I said, approve, excuse me, approve entitlements for high school and West Falls Church Economic Development parcel. Update our policies and procedures. Increase community outreach. Continued streamlining of our processes. Increase transparency into entitlement review process. And establish guidelines and expectations for developers. Continued development of small area plans. And empower staff to perform more administrative reviews in an effort to reduce our meeting time. So those were things that I thought of quickly. But then I, we've got all these paper streets, Greenway Downs, parking, so, and the three comp plans. I have these if you think they're, if the group thinks they're worthwhile, but.
I thought they were, I mean, I think they're reasonable. I'm not sure about the administrative review one. I think I'd need more discussion on that before.
Okay, yeah, that's, I do think that's worth having this discussion that Paul and I have had. Trying to reduce the meeting's time, trying to streamline the process, trying to not waste our time on things that we, you know. But I agree, shouldn't go into place without discussion. So to me, that was a priority, but I'm happy to table that as a, as a goal. And then let's say have that as a full conversation.
Yeah, I'd rather it not be a goal. I'd rather it be something that we're going to discuss at some point. Mostly because the feedback from some citizens have been that they feel like we're doing too much administrative review. And that we don't have as many public meetings on things. Like, they feel like the comprehensive plan chapters don't have the same level of public meetings as they did in 2000, on the 2005 redo. I know. I'm just saying that that, you know, we're, we're hearing that and we're hearing that things. Oh, Downtown Plaza is another example where people were, where's the public review for the revisited version? You know, we had a site plan on the big version and now we've shrunk it down and I under- I understand why we don't feel like we need it at this point, 'cause we're really just facelifting. But still, there's a feeling that there wasn't a really good, strong public meeting for that, so I think we have to be careful.
Perhaps, careful, and we'll, we'll make this a bigger conversation. I think really the retreat is the time to have this. But it's also, we spoke on it. We said, here's what our goals were, here's what our objectives, and then it comes back with some minor modifications. Do we need to re, you know, litigate that whole thing?
Right.
This is some of these park master plans and things like that. If it's a big, significant change, then, you know, it triggers something where we need to talk about. But if it's in an area where we can not have it come back on our agenda and give, empower the staff to say, that met the conversation and the objectives of the planning commission, I was hoping to lighten our agenda in some of these cases, so.
Well, and I think that a lot of times we do do that in our motions even. We'll say, like, these issues can be dealt with administratively. And I don't have a problem with that, 'cause we publicly said, there's some remaining issues, and we're okay with it being done administratively. I just think we need to be careful that we make sure it's being publicly known, maybe, that it's not gonna come back. You know, because when we don't do something publicly, then we do cut out the ability of citizens to comment on something.
Agreed.
Something I was just thinking about, would there be any way to include looking into zoning to make way for accessible housing, you know, or?
I'm sorry, I said, what did you say?
Hmm?
I'm sorry, make way for what?
Affordable housing, which we got a different word for it.
Accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, well, not only that, but the possibility of duplexes, or the possibility of having a smaller amount of land for.
Townhouses.
Townhouses, or anything like that, and that would be in our purview. And I think that's one of the, one of the ways we could get to, you know, a living policy, you know, and, because right now, we don't have that. We don't have any tools to change things so that, hey, if there's a possibility of building some units and, you know.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we do need, we need a review of our residential zoning and how it works with, with the plans we have. But that's a big project. That would be a lot of public meetings. On the flip side, I also sometimes think that we need a more comprehensive review of our business zoning. What do we allow in the different business zones?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to pick one out.
Well, right, and then there, are these, the business zoning we have now, does it actually reflect our current goals and our future goals? Because it was set a long time ago, and we haven't substantially changed it.
Or business uses.
Our business uses, yeah.
We haven't, we've updated it somewhat and kicked, you know, and threw out some, but there's some that, you know, probably should be included that would not be acceptable.
Well, we've talked, and we've kinda talked about it here and there, like, business, the heights of businesses that are allowed, the by right allow, what we allow by rights, things like that could be reviewed. It, you know, we get things in the city by right that really don't fit our goals a lot, and then there's not much we can do about it.
So this is, this is a great list for things we wanna do over the next year, and I see you writing them down feverishly. In terms of this document and just trying to get this out, you know, to council, what our priorities are, do we wanna list, like, just the big, obvious ones that just say, three comp, comp plan updates, you know, but we talked about the, the, the area plans, Paper Streets and Greenway Downs, and then there's all this other stuff that I put, put on is just something that we.
Absolutely.
Not go to council.
It's retreat. We've kind of put our list together for retreat, too.
Yeah, and my, my thinking along the lines is to get it out of my head and onto Paul's paper.
All right, so do you have a sense of what we're, we've banded around a lot of ideas. Do you know what we want on this document? 'Cause I think I do. Do you?
Well, I think the group said a lot of things.
Lot of things.
The, I, I still think I'm leaning towards sort of a five or six item list.
Correct.
And right now, we've probably got, as you said, good material to take into that advance and figure out the work plan.
Correct. So I think that the five items are the three comprehensive plan updates. I think it is the, complete the small area plan, the.
West End Small Area Plan.
The, the small area, but which one's the?
West End.
West End Small Area Plan. I think it's address Paper Streets. Again, this is something for council, you know, just so that it's priority. Greenway Downs, just so that we're consistent. And I think that's, these are the ones for this document. Is there anything else?
The high school and the West Falls Church Project?
I'd like, yeah, can we include that one? That's sort of, that's, yeah.
Well, that's my question, right? If, if that West End and that high school project are going to dominate most board and commission agendas through April, May, and so that really leaves most folks in the city about seven months in order to get other work accomplished, so you're already short half the year.
So that should be first. I've said it, approve the entitlements for the high school and Weston, West Falls Church Economic Development Parcel. That's, I agree, that's gotta be first. And then the rest of the stuff we have, we'll, we'll leave for our. And.
So what I'm hearing is three buckets of work. We've got complete the entitlements for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project and the high school. Complete a small area plan for the west end of town to put those decisions into context. Complete the already initiated comprehensive plan updates for the environment chapter, housing chapter, and the demographics chapter, and then modernize the zoning code to include updates to, well, Paper Streets may actually be a future land use map. So modernize the zoning code and future land use map regarding Paper Streets and the Greenway Downs overlay.
I think that's appropriate for this document.
Do you need to say anything about site plans for the high school and the library? Or is that just considered work as?
The high school was included in the first batch along with West Falls Church. The library, however, I excluded, not because it's not important, just because it hadn't come up yet.
It will.
If you list everything.
I meant in this conversation.
I think it's assumed that it's, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I didn't mean.
Ignore it.
I think it's assumed that nobody's gonna do anything about it.
Well, I mean, we're not really driving this, but when it comes to us, we'll consider it. I mean, is it a priority for us to approve site in the library? I mean, when it comes to us, well, you're right, we won't.
I, I think it's something, it's work we're going to do.
Right. That's kind of self-evident, yeah.
I'm just saying, we're not, we're not, that's not.
Yeah, hopefully it's listed.
Approve site plan.
Well, the comp plans are, are under our purview. We're, we're the driver for it. We are not the driver for the library site plan. We are the approver of the library site plan. So it's not really a goal for us, 'cause we're gonna get it.
We don't really have the opinions.
Well, we shouldn't, until we see it.
Those are the buckets.
Excellent.
All right. Keep writing on the back of the agenda, and I'm like, where's my agenda?
Yeah, I know. I have two.
Okay. Identify, next item is sixty, identify fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five CIP priority questions.
The, I'm sorry, if we go back to the previous item.
Yeah.
The staff report had requested a motion. I don't think this has to happen by formal motion.
No, let's have a motion, that's fine.
The, just to confirm, I've got these things right. What we'll do as staff is, we'll make our edits based on what we think we heard, and then we'll go ahead and send it to the group if anybody has any concerns. We've still got another meeting to catch up.
Sound good. Okay. The, I'm bringing up the.
Cool, just do the motion at the next meeting.
Sure.
Got it, all right. Can we get a, do we need a motion to, to continue this item? Nah, okay, great, excellent, next meeting. All right, now going to the CIP priority question. Now, this is something new. We are in uncharted waters. So what we're trying to do, if I understand it, and I'll turn this over to staff very, very quickly, is we're trying to streamline this process. We've had lots of meetings. They bring in everybody. They all make a speech about what they need to do, and some of these are sort of self-evident. They're, they're obvious. We're gonna do them. We don't need to hear from the police force that we need to update the.
Radios.
You know, radios, or, or contribute to the firing range, or whatever the thing was that, that we have to keep contributing to. I have, so what we're trying to say, are there areas that we really wanna hear about that are gonna drive this process, or we're gonna have decision-making, you know, real decisions to make on it? And if we can just bring those people in, then we are saving ourselves a lot of time and hopefully avoiding an entire, you know, work session meeting in between. I think this is a wonderful idea. In addition, that this year should be easier than others, because.
We have no money.
We have, A, no money, and B, according to Cindy Mester's plan, this is a, this is not the year, this is an odd-numbered year, and I forget the terminology she used, but basically this is to make minor adjustments, and in even years, it's the more major adjustments. So this is like, hey, this was our plan going forward. We wanna, you know, the idea here was we make big plans, make big changes in an even year, and in the odd year, we, we give them time to actually implement these changes and, and not do that much adjusting. I think the CIP process is one of our main responsibilities as planning commission, so I don't wanna just say, we're good on everything, let's just vote on this thing. But if we can give some real guidance and save some people some late nights, I'd really like to do that.
Well, you know, and I would just like caution, like, sometimes things seem very straightforward. We, we, one example for me is, a few years ago, the fire department put in a new fire truck. And they were replacing a three-year-old fire truck. And we were like, why are we replacing a three-year-old fire truck? And it was because Arlington had come up with this new rule where they wanted all their trucks replaced every three years, even though it was still very viable. And we did some research, and it turned out most localities keep their fire trucks much longer, like five to seven years. So we did, we were able to push that truck off at a time where we really didn't have the funds for it. So I, you know, not every time, I think we can say, equipment requests should be glossed over. Sometimes we have to really look at them and ask questions, because, because immediately we're like, um, this truck is not that old, so why are we replacing it?
Republic works, too.
Yeah, so we do have to, I think we have to be careful sometimes, but, you know, I think it's, part of the problem is it's hard to say what the questions are until you really look at it. But because we're in the second year of the two-year plan, I, I don't think I have big questions right now, because everything's in there. We've kind of looked at already.
I had some questions, but I'm not sure if this is quite what she was going for, and I can throw them out and respond. That's okay. First one is for the library, the use of the Founder's Row proffer, and how that affects plans for the library. Second was the status of stormwater projects and how it affects the enterprise fund. I'm not sure if we've kind of seen, like, you know, how much money is there, what, how does that map to the current list of projects that are in the CIP? Is there enough money? Is there a shortfall? I've just kind of never seen that, that displayed. Next one was the status of City Hall, how the delay affects costs.
Whoops.
All right. The next one has to do with the Fellow's Property, the infrastructure improvements. Kind of my understanding was that the city council looked to allocate money to buy the land, but it seemed like there's need, in order to make that land usable, there has to be upgrades to the infrastructure. I'm not sure if that has to be separately funded, and therefore should it go into the CIP as a new item?
I thought that was gonna go as be part of the park master plan implementation, because we have to get the land, and we have to do the master plan, so we can't make any big changes to that property until there's a master park plan.
Yeah, and it hasn't been finalized.
So, so right now, I think it's kind of in, we have that fun, the park master plan implementation.
So it'll be addressed somewhere. I just wasn't sure if it was being addressed, or if that was just gonna be left to future.
Yeah, I think until there's something specific, it just goes in that general master plan implementation.
Okay.
That I do know.
That's not an unreasonable thought, though, that a lot of times when you see a privately funded project come through, the developer is, is aware of how the approval process is gonna go, and includes both construction costs for the project as well as the site and, and the adjoining public spaces. Often, when you look at a publicly funded project, it includes from the site lines in, so it doesn't always include sidewalk, street trees, streetscape, and, and those other items. That's a fair question for the planning commission to ask. When a facility project's coming forward, how much is included for these kinds of items?
And where's the money gonna come from?
Right.
And where's it gonna come from?
And, you know, and right now, I think it's just gonna be open space, which doesn't really need, you know, until they do a master plan.
Well, that, well, what was.
Or decide how they're gonna use it.
There was some discussion about it at the time, and, and what it came down to is there's no major changes gonna be made until.
Right.
There's a master park plan, because that is the way we deal with parks. We don't do anything until we have the plan.
Decide how it's gonna be used.
And that could take, with the public outreach and everything, those seem to take about a year.
Years.
Year and a half, two years.
All right, let's, let me just try to bring this back in. Do you have more?
Just one more.
Okay.
An estimate of the streetlight conversion to LED. Right now, there's, city owns some of the streetlights, and the majority are owned by Dominion. They've come, Dominion has come in, if we wanted to convert the Dominion-owned streetlights to LED, we still have to pay for that conversion. In the past, it was very expensive, so no, no one did it. Dominion has now come in with significant reductions in the cost of those conversions. So jurisdictions like Fairfax County and Arlington are kind of going through, and they've got programs to pretty much just go across the whole jurisdiction. I don't think we've done that yet, and even though there's an upfront cost, these will save money over time, because they're LED bulbs, and it may tie into that CACT item earlier about better visibility.
So my understanding about what we're trying to accomplish here, those are very good questions, and we need to make sure the right people are here. I think if, if we, if you indulge me here for a moment, if we go through the various categories, there's some areas that just aren't even funded in two thousand and nineteen, so we don't need, like, as much as we care about parks and rec here, and we do, and we do, there's no money slated. So unless you really want money in there, I don't think we need parks and rec. There's a public, there's a bunch of categories. So public safety, all we have is the fire station six reinvestment, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Again, this is the plan. This is not what we, sometimes we go exactly with it, but sometimes we don't. You know, going to your point, if you wanna question this, that's fine, but generally speaking, this looks like a straight number, a hundred and fifty thousand every year, except for this year, for it's a little higher, if that's a question we could ask it, I guess. But I assume Cindy's got that answer. But I don't need to see, I need, I don't need to have the fire station people come and make a presentation. I mean, that seems foolish, even though they're slated for two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
And then, how's, that's to do with the new windows and everything, right?
Still, yeah.
I don't know. There's a hundred and fifty every year. I'm sure that's gonna be in our booklet that says what the one fifty is. We can ask it.
I mean, shouldn't we really, I mean, shouldn't we really be focusing on the parts of the capital approval plan that really relate? I mean, isn't that, I mean, isn't that, when it gets down to it, our role is to look at our comp, the comp plan, the goals and the visions, and we're really concerned about infrastructure, physical infrastructure? I mean, I guess technically, we can talk about radios and fire trucks, but ultimately, city council's gonna make those calls. I mean, aren't we really here as a planning commission? Why, why, we should get back to the nuts and bolts of why the planning commission even has the role to review the CIP. It's not so we can be like a second city council and look at, I think, some, right, some of those other issues, in my opinion. I mean, I think that we should be looking at physical improvements, physical upgrades, and looking at how it ties into the goals and visions in the comp plan, and making sure that it's, it's consistent with that. I don't know how we would argue that, like, radio expenditures are, are consistent or not with the comp plan.
Look, I a hundred percent agree.
And so.
We just make it because of a threshold issue.
Right, we're a fire truck. We could try to argue that, but I don't, you know, ultimately, the city council's gonna make that call. I don't know if the planning commission has a real role there.
We actually did make, I mean, we did push it, and the reason was at the time-
We can push it, but it doesn't mean, I don't think we have a lot of weight to push it. Where, where are we sitting, what expertise do we have to look at how much fire truck costs?
And you're correct, it was, it was a recommendation, recommendation to council that they do push it back. But I, I will say, we are responsible to make recommendations to them. And the reason for that at the time was that we needed more cash flow for, I believe it was the TJ project. So, so sometimes we do make these recommendations, because we're trying to juggle cash flow and where, where money is in the CIP for the projects that need to be done to meet our goals. So I, I would just say, I'd be careful saying that we don't have any role in that kind of thing. Sometimes we have to come in and say things like, we need to, this project needs to be pushed out if we're going to really meet our goals.
Or it needs to be included and not ignored, such as the high school was for a long while.
Right, exactly.
There will be two meetings, and I think the planning commission does have a dual role that I think the charter lays out exactly what, what you're both saying. That, one, the CIP exists to advance the comprehensive plan and the desired development of community. And two, the planning commission is also supposed to make a recommendation about how to fund these things. And so sometimes you do need to know how you're gonna move things around, whether in time or across projects, to make it work. There are two meetings scheduled, so is it possible to, I don't know if the group wants to, but you could talk about, you could break that conversation into two pieces. You could say, look, first meeting, we want to talk about development of community and what are the priorities that the group thinks are important, whether it's on the comprehensive plan, the small area plans, latest practices in sustainability and resiliency. And then maybe number two is, all right, now that we've talked about all these things, how are we going to pay for it? That might be a logical way to take advantage of those two meetings. In, in which case, the first meeting is, what are the projects or initiatives the planning commission really wants to see in the CIP? Whether it's in this year or out year, or who wants to understand why a particular initiative has moved around or what's the impact on, on, on project funding. And then the second could be a review of, of making sure all the, the numbers balance.
And this recognize that we're making recommendations, and you're right, city council will decide, but they probably want to hear from everybody, including us, on some of these, as to what we think about it.
Right, no, I agree with that. What I'm saying is, we are experts in a certain arena. The city council, in theory, sort of just needs to be concerned about all aspects of city, of the city, you know, of, of the city, right? We have a slightly more narrow role than city council, I would argue. I, I mean, I think we do, even though planning by its definition is extremely broad and, and, you know, we look at a whole host of issues. But I think when it comes to the CIP, when I look at the CIP, the parts of it that I think are the most salient for us are the infrastructure pieces and the pieces related to goals that tie back to the comprehensive plan. So green initiatives and things like that certainly are very relevant. And I guess, yes, to some degree, if we're, you know, trying to recommend how much money to allocate. But I mean, I just, I just think, you know, I'm not saying we, people are free to talk about whatever they like and we can, I guess, recommend anything we want. But I think the council may care more or take it more seriously if we're looking at the issues that, you know, we sort of have, are within our, our wheelhouse, as opposed to how much they're paying the police this year, or how much, for a new squad car, or, or DPW needs a new garbage truck. You know, I mean, you know, that's my opinion, but that's how, I sort of think we should, the best use of our time is focusing on stuff related to our core mission.
I, I agree. Those things are part of our recommendation, these, these other items that clear the $150,000 threshold. But I think in terms of the questions that we have, we should focus our attention on that. There's not that many things that are being funded, by the way. And so maybe we can, because I, I don't know that we have, like, priorities outside of this list. I mean, maybe, maybe you guys do, I, I don't. But if we look at the things that are getting money, let's, let's start there. We've got this fire station reinvestment, which I don't have any questions about, really. We have the library expansion and renovations. Do we have questions about that? We, they've come before us a bunch of times, they're gonna continue to come before us. I believe we're trying to figure out how to deal with the site plan. We're not questioning whether we're gonna spend the $7.3 million.
I agree that we don't have input, but it's, sometimes it's helpful for the public to, you know, to hear what's going on through our meetings. So it becomes sometimes just a matter of educating the public, so.
But we'll review all these, I mean, Cindy will give us a general overview of all of it.
To be clear, what you're saying is, we could review it without having the library people here.
Correct, exactly.
Cindy will be here and go through and paint the taking detail.
She must be here on February four, give her pitch, and we can have questions for her.
So the main thing you're saying is not, like, are we gonna talk about this? The question is, do we need Tom Polara in here?
Correct.
Do we need Gavin in here?
No, we don't, and with the library project-
Well, we might for something, if there were anything that we're spending money on, but this year, it seems like.
Well, I think we should, so the library, I don't think we need a special presentation. We know what this money is for and we're trying to figure it out, so I, I don't think the library needs it.
It's already over budget.
But City Hall, maybe we do want, the, the City Hall is getting another, you know, rough math, looks like $600,000. And maybe we want, we want to hear that presentation about City Hall.
Yes, I think we do.
So.
And luckily Cindy can give us that too, so.
She can, she can, maybe so there's no person that was gonna be slated anyway.
Right.
Ross, can I go back to something?
And then we got transportation.
You mentioned before about parks and rec. I still think everything is pretty loosey-goosey with the downtown park and, um-
They are not getting money.
Meaning, um, that, uh, I don't know what involved for infrastructure down there, if they're gonna need more money, but the vice mayor has asked for a full accounting of all expenditures that went, went, and are going into that project. And, uh, and so I think there is, you know, some follow-through that needs to be done on that.
Well, I think that's separate from CIP, because this is not being funded by CIP, but it might be-
It was last year.
Well, I mean, actually, this is EDA, right?
Now, but now they've rolled it, I think they've come down to amount that it's coming out of their funds from the land sale, so. But it would be nice if we could schedule, even if it's a speaker series, someone from the EDA or staff to give us an overview of it. Because the only plans I've seen were kind of basically like a rough view of it. And, um, and so if we, because if we have, if we could hold a, just have a brief overview at a public meeting, that would also help citizens who want to see what's going on as well.
Because this is fairly well moving ahead, but there are some infrastructure questions about it.
But this is totally unrelated to CIP.
Right, it's unrelated, that's a different, different than a CIP issue, but it would still be good to have a presentation, some of the kind of non-
Because I know we did have money in the CIP for it, for full transparency of everything that's been spent.
Right, right.
And, and the rest of the money really goes to the transportation area and overwhelmingly, it's grant-funded. Paul, who, who speaks to us about transportation? That actually used to be you.
Used to be me, it's, uh, the team's always changing. I think that's one of the fun things about working in a smaller jurisdiction, is that you'll see folks take on different roles.
All fun, how many hats?
Well, you don't get, that's one of the things that, that the city has to offer folks as a, as a recruitment tool, is that you won't get stuck doing the same thing this year as you did last year. I don't know what you'll be working on, but I know it's not the same thing.
That's not always true. That's not always true.
Or in the same location.
You know, so I think it's a lot of the same cast that you've seen before, though. Kerry O'Nino, Jeff Sykes on the planning side, and then on the public work side, you've got Mike Whitfield, Tara. That's, um, and then we've got Lionel's taking a hand in it, Al Astorga, Sue Long. A lot of different folks have a lot of different roles, Caitlin.
We don't need to hear from all these people, though.
No.
Oh, they know. No, but I do think that there's, there's, I think there's sort of a sense coming together here about what are the elements of the CIP that have a strong tie to some elements of the comprehensive plan or to, to city development? I've heard some themes emerging, so I've, I've heard public facilities, City Hall, and specifically impacts of, of delay on budget. Library, what's the implication for the Founder's Row VC as well as sort of what is the timing for the project? When is it gonna come before the group? I've heard about sustainability, which is obviously a topic in the, the being drafted chapter, so it might be worth talking about what's going on with the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, what's going on with LED lighting? What are some of these trends that even if they're not taken care of in this CIP, how do we start that conversation? Also parks, that idea of when fellows' comes up as part of the park master plan, will facilities and site improvements and sidewalks and crosswalks be included in the budget? Transportation, one thing just to consider is that it's not just, the conversation may not just be about what's being programmed for funding in the future. What's the status of some of those projects that are already existing? I know the deputy city manager does a good job of providing those quarterly CIP updates, and that might be a question to be had of, of those things, they're still moving forward or maybe they've fallen behind their timelines, which one is the planning commission wanna see advanced first?
And that's one advantage of the CIP for us annually, too, is that we often do get updates. Because, because right now, I'm wondering what's going on with South Washington. Where are our crosswalks? Where are our lights?
And I've heard that the multi-modal might be revised.
Right.
But I think these are all questions for Cindy, but I wanna, we're gonna have a long conversation about CIP. I don't want to have it right now. But I want to figure out, this is something new. Do you feel like you have the direction you need from us to help, to help facilitate this, to streamline the process? There's, I, I want to make it shorter this year, and I think for the obvious reasons that we talked about, not much money, discretionary money to spend, and this is an odd year, an odd numbered year, rather. So, uh, did you get the direction you need? I mean, I want to make sure Mr. Stevens' questions are answered. I think Cindy can answer a lot of these, and maybe we can do this in a, a shorter amount of time.
So the questions, and I think what I'll do is bring them back again, just like with the annual report, bring them back to the next meeting. Again, that still is this time before the, the February four briefing from the deputy city manager. But I think the questions I heard so far are really those, those questions that are geared more towards for the first meeting, the implications of these investments in the comp plan and smaller plans.
She can address them when she comes and pops up. I was kind of interpreting your note was, what questions do we have to give her in advance so that she can come and kind of?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see in terms of organizing the meeting. Instead of leaving Cindy to give a presentation on the entire thing, not knowing what questions the group may ask, and then the group asking questions afterward, can the group instead preload the conversation and say, hey, if you're gonna be here for a two-hour presentation, can you spend 30 minutes to an hour talking about this? We'll do question and, so we're gonna spend the first hour and a half on these items that we're particularly interested in. The other 30 minutes, Cindy, you go ahead and put together a presentation of information you think we need to have to make an informed decision.
Because, because there's not much new, so like, unlike past years where we don't even know what she might bring to us.
Well, I, I would like to see, like, the first half hour be the overview, and maybe she doesn't go into that much detail. That, that is to reorient myself and I think the public as well, and then get into the, us directing the conversation. I think it's important for this, you know, we do this once a year, just, you know, tell, to go through this in general without going line item by line item. I'd really like to see that first, and then we'll, we'll see if we can direct it. And I don't know what other direction she's given in terms of when she asks for priority questions. Maybe she wants to be a little bit more specific and we can talk about the next meeting, but.
Yeah, so Paul, you're saying you've compiled notes for our next meeting, you'll say, hey, this is the guidance we should give Cindy. We'll all tweak that, that'll go, so then when she comes back, comes to us in February, it'll all be teed up, superficial. Boom, out here by 8:30.
Well, no, this is still banking on a two-hour meeting time, so 30 minutes for Cindy's introduction to, to ground everybody in the CIP, and then in an hour and a half, that's really guided by, and it, and that hour and a half may still start with Cindy's presentation, but it's, Cindy's now responding in that last hour and a half to your all's questions.
Right, if we don't have an hour and a half worth of questions, then that's fine. Or we may also turn out that we need someone specific and that for, for the next meeting, we know who the person is that we need. So, and we may, I mean, we could come out of that and not really need the next session as much, so.
Great.
I, I mean, this is just not a big year of changes, so I don't see big things that we're gonna be, I'm actually, Lenny and I were just saying, we really, we more want to know why, why things that we approved changed. So like, why did the garage on the back of City Hall change after we did a site plan for that? You know, what, what's going on with South Washington? What's going on with the downtown plaza after we did a site plan for that? So there's been a lot of changes post-site plan.
Changes to site plans.
Yeah, that, that, that normally we would hear about. And so why are they not coming back and why aren't we hearing about them? And if we're not, then why, you know, so to me, that, that's not CIP, that's, that's actually what's, reading through the CIP that made me think of those things.
Because we send it out there and then we never hear of any changes that might come about, significant ones.
All right, I think we've given you this guidance.
Yeah.
That's terrific. All right, let's move on to the next item, which is liaisons to boards and commissions. As I said before, this is, Rob is on everything.
We already have one. Well, I'll start off and say, I'm happy to stay on CACT, so I'm good there.
Yeah, I didn't come here prepared to say, you're on this, you're on that. I'm, I'm going to be entirely dependent on people saying, I'm okay with it, or you gotta get off it, or the night doesn't work, or something like that, and then we can discuss it. I'm, I'm, don't few my role as saying, you know.
Right, right.
Andy, you're on architecture advisory board, that's just not how this is gonna work. So, does anybody, let's start with, does anybody, since this is a continuing list of everybody's on the commission already, does anybody have any problems that they, or a group they want to get off of for a variety of reasons, or any reason, not, not a variety?
Well, I, my status is still in limbo. And if I get to stay, and I'll explain that to anybody who wants to hear it later, I really need to get off recreation and parks, it really interferes constantly with another meeting.
Well, I would like to get on recreation and parks, actually, so I'll take that.
What, what leadership here?
No, no, it's just, it's, I have some stuff I would be good, because I do the Haptat Restoration Team, which is in their parks, it would actually be good because I don't get enough input from them. And now I'll be seeing them more often, so they'll have to listen to me.
Is there one you want to get rid of then, or trade, I should say?
No, no, I'll keep, I just have CACT right now, I'll keep that, and I'll pick up Rec and Parks, and, and I actually-
And I have four each.
I was a rep to Rec and Parks a long time ago for planning commission, so.
Yeah, you were.
You guys have four each, so, Mr. Stevens, let me ask you, is this been onerous and we need to change some stuff around? I mean, just tell us and we'll figure out, we got seven people here.
I wouldn't complain a lot if somebody wanted, you know, one of them, but I'm, I'm happy to continue.
With, with that sales pitch, you're unlikely to get some assistance.
Not very good.
I love the meetings, come on.
It sounds like Tim wants to pick up on it.
I think I do.
Also, can I make the point, too, that when we switch these out, we need to make sure the right people get on the new email list, because?
I know, you always get the ones from me.
Well, I know that-
I finally get them now, I get them.
Well, I know, but it took me six months to get Mr. Krasner on the list for housing in Harb, and-
I wasn't getting them, and I missed a couple meetings.
Right, and I kept saying, please move him over, and, um, so it was hard.
Uh, we have two here for the EDA, did that require two appointees, or that, would you, you guys want it, Lindy and Tim, you both? I mean, do we need, it's fine.
I did it for four years, I don't think there was enjoyment.
Yeah, you and I used to do it.
It's more amazement, I think, than anything else.
It's more like, Cindy, did you guys read the minutes for that?
I, I was always like, you're doing what?
Does this need to be changed or we're okay with the way it stands?
If, if you're happy with it, I'm okay.
I have no preference about it. Okay, well then, I think it is as stated for, from, the same thing from 18 is same as 19, with the exception of the advisory board of recreation and parks, is now going to be Mrs. Teetz instead of Mrs. Hockenberry. All right, wonderful, done.
There's a lot of really great things that can happen in our parks that you guys have gone in. You know, they really did a great job of redoing signage and working on the entryways of the parks. Crossman is amazingly different. Lots of work has gone on there, like, we don't have a whole field of bamboo anymore, so.
Well, that is a perfect segue into planning commissioner reports. Does anybody have any reports they'd like to make? What I would, I know this is not gonna be followed through over the course of the year, but I would like to try to shorten this part of our meeting. We are, we just gossip, basically, for the, you know, 10, 15 minutes. If we can, if you've been to one of these liaison, if you're a liaison on one of these committees and you have something to report, let's, uh, let's try to keep this short, we'll try to remind people of that. But if that's just out of, that's, that's out of politeness, again, trying to put a conscious effort to make the meetings a little shorter this year. But with that said, I want to hear where you've been and what you've done and what's going on, so anybody have any?
I already shoot Horton in the CACT goal, so I'm done.
Done with that.
At the last EDA, you were, yeah, okay. We're getting closer and closer to getting some video type of advertising for the city. Short little blurbs that's coming through your brother.
Video?
Well, promotional, promotional stuff.
I think it's a Super Bowl commercial.
Would go on Facebook and Instagram, or?
Yes.
Where are on the?
They have a consultant who's putting it together.
Okay, because I'm, I mean, I hope it's not just going on our channel.
I hope not, too.
Everybody's got their own channel, that'd be good.
No, but I think it's-
We've already convinced those people, if you're on that channel, you're in.
It's just the first initiative, they had one fairly long one that they're gonna try to break up into pieces for different audiences.
This is for recruiting businesses to come to the city.
Well, with the placement of it is probably the most important part, so when they find out how they're gonna be placed, I'd be really interested to know.
Any other reports?
Some comments on the campus coordinating committee, but you have first-class refusal.
No, I, I happened to miss this last one, that's the only one I've actually missed, but please report on it. I know, I, bad timing, but. But please report on it, I was not, the record will show I was not in attendance.
I can highlight just a couple of things I think are of interest to us. One of the main issues that they're dealing with right now is the garage and what's called that trapezoidal piece. So that's the piece that's actually part of the schools' side of the 70% split that we agreed to do. But the garage as being proposed right now would be jointly used by both the ten acre economic development as well as the, the schools. But that raises a lot of legal questions as to whether or not it would pass muster with the people in Fairfax County who are overseeing the, the, the sale of the, you know, the subdivision. So that, that's- So that that's gonna continue to be discussed. Also, in that same vein is the road from Haycock into the to the school. It's not clear whether that will be part of the school, seventy percent or part of the economic development, thirty percent. So those are some weighty issues that they're working on. When the initial site plan comes to us for the high school, it won't include that trapezoid piece. They're just, since it's not resolved at this point, they're gonna leave that out, so.
Because the alternative is just surface parking mostly, so it's not like a big issue.
Surface parking for the school, but underground parking for the economic development, which means that they it they wouldn't pay as much.
Right, but I'm saying for the site plan for the school, it's sort of a minor detail that we can sort out later.
So let me say, I'm I have spoken to others who are at the meeting as well, so I am up to speed on this. But the developer, I do know through the process that went on last year, they had a they had a full proposal that anticipated this problem. The it doesn't impact their ability to, it changes some things around for sure if the parking. This this trapezoidal parking is not allowed to go up four stories, but they have it, they had an alternative plan and they can still move forward. I hope we can resolve this. I would like to see that above-ground parking, it's gonna be parking anyway, let's utilize it in a more efficient way. But I do know that there are some debate about that. But I don't think it dooms the economic development project in any way.
Right, yeah, I think this was more just by way of surfacing an issue that needs to get resolved and most people seem to think it's mostly a legal issue.
And we asked this question numerous times as part of the evaluation committee. Is this legal, is this legal, is this legal? And there it was not resolved at that time.
Tim, do they, what is there a strategy for resolving it? Is it the sort of thing we could proactively go to Fairfax County and get them to say sure that sounds good or?
You're saying the debate is about the original agreement?
The original agreement was that only thirty percent of the entire site could be used for commercial purposes, which this would be more than thirty percent if you considered.
It gets into some really fine-grained issues as to ownership versus use. You know, if you have ownership, but you're using it entirely something, you know, for something else, does that?
Yeah, I I think it is very, very nuanced, honestly, because the parking where it's located would be outside of the ten acres. But it is, you know, I forget the number, a hundred and fifty spaces, let's just use a round number.
One eighty-seven.
One eighty-seven, let's be more specific. Would be provided to the schools for their use, their exclusive use with some, you know, sharing when they weren't in session, when they when school didn't need it. But to me, that seems like it is meets the meets the intent. But again, this is a legal issue and the lawyers.
The county's not approving it, this is right, the agreement is the agreement and it would be up to the county to challenge it.
Correct.
Well, and that's what I'm.
Lawyers would have to work it out.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering, is there a way to proactively get it sorted out versus build it and then have them challenge it?
Our city manager just said he's in discussions with Fairfax.
All right, so they're trying to figure it out. Presumably, the developer would be very interested in having it pre-approved too, because if they start building it and then.
So the question is whether they count the roads, is that is that?
Well, that's one, the other question is that top road, can you count that towards school? Because obviously the, for the economic development, the more economic development they can count versus roads. And that, I think the argument could be the school can't function without that road, so.
That's right.
But again.
So there's that. Right now, we're still in the due diligence period with EYA. I guess they still have up till twenty-sixth of this month to see if we're hiding some, you know, nuclear waste or something on the site. I don't know what they might find, but that's kind of a key date.
Jimmy Hoffa.
Only in the odor.
Tony the Pony.
No, we chew out Tony the Pony.
Wow, that's an old reference.
And January twenty-seventh is the next Sunday series for the West End Project, and that's it.
Very complete report, terrific. Okay, anything else, although I'm gonna move on to the planning director's report. Great, let's do that.
Thank you, Chairman Members of the Commission. The so it's a fairly short report that's typed up for you and this is celebrating work of one of our staff planner, Shayna Schaefer. Included in your package were updated updated renderings of the the city's zoning and future land use maps. So as you may know, computers are a relatively new thing in city business here. And so there was an era not that long ago when all council actions with land use and future land use map changes were stored on Post-it notes and pushpins on a paper mat that was held up in the old City Hall. And one day.
Didn't make the move.
It did not make the move because one day.
Someone dropped it, all the Post-it notes fell off.
About a decade ago.
Windblown.
The rumor is that the planning director came in and thought this looked unprofessional and discarded the map before anyone else has showed up. And anyone else could advise the planning director that that was where staff had recorded all the changes.
Oh, my God.
So Shayna did some excellent research with records out of the clerk's office to go identify going back to the year two thousand, what were all the map changes that council acted on. And also to incorporate, maybe I'm stealing some of your your thunder here, maybe I'll just turn it over to Shayna and tell you to 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 tell you all about what she did.
Right, so as Paul had mentioned, I'd gone through the city clerk's legislative indexes to make sure that we were capturing all of the council actions since the year two thousand. And then I took that information and went through the GIS and made any updates needed. And then in addition to that, we also added the mixed-use redevelopment overlay back onto the zoning map. We added a layer for proffers, which is required per state code. And we added a layer for special exceptions because we thought that would be useful to know. And in addition to that, we also revised the color scheme to go along more with traditional zoning color classifications and make it read more readable.
Gorgeous.
Thank you.
Have we ever looked at the official design coverage within, you know, is it necessary or does it need to re be revisited?
It's it would certainly be a zoning district worth revisiting. It is one of those difficult questions to answer when an applicant comes in and and they say, I'm looking at one of these parcels and it's got this OD zoning on it. What do I do about it? The other one that's a little bit tricky is the creative design district, which applies to Oakwood.
We have a creative design district?
Well, that's the thing. Those parcels are zoned creative design, but the creative design district was removed from the zoning ordinance. So you've got you've got a zoning classification on some parcels, but that zoning classification isn't.
Which one's zoned? Oakwood is zoned.
Is that Oakwood?
The apartments are not seed.
Uh, yeah, that was actually the city's down there, the the Blue Whittier Park and the the Extended Stay Hotel, the Homewood Suites. Do I have that right? Yeah. It's the, that was actually the city's first mixed-use project in recent history. It was horizontal mixed-use with residential on one side and and commercial on the other, and that was developed through the creative development district.
So we need to get rid of that.
And we need to look at transition.
Yeah, transition would also be a good one to.
All kinds of problems.
Yeah, we we shouldn't have transition, we should just make a determination.
We've been saying that forever.
Yeah, it just causes problems.
So I think these are wonderful maps. The other thing that we've done to professionalize development of the maps, not only do they reflect the latest council actions, but also we've added a signature block, so when you see a map, it's got a a date on it of of these are relevant or or updated through this date. And these folks who are pretty thorough about listening to, following along with the council actions have have certified that this is in fact the the correct city.
So and then I I saw the spreadsheet, are we gonna make a concerted effort to keep this spreadsheet up?
That is so awesome.
Is it gonna be something on the website available to the public? Because sometimes that works well, because people will complain when it hasn't been updated and that'll force it to be updated.
But with the dates and everything, that is, we've never had that.
One of the one of the questions.
I keep saying, when did we do that?
I I think a date includes revisions through date on the maps is great. I wonder what the best way to indicate like, okay, what changed from the last version, which is sort of that spreadsheet, but you go from like this map visual to a spreadsheet. I don't know if there's a way on a map, I don't know how other people do it to indicate this has changed or a secondary map.
On construction drawings.
Or you could be one of those, yeah, cloud them or it could be one of those, you know, games like two pictures and find the differences.
Which is on zoning and land use maps, that is a fun game, especially when changes are made at the parcel level. The, no, I think posting the the spreadsheet is a good thing. We're actually trying, planning is trying to catch up to zoning in this sense a little bit, that the zoning office for years has kept excellent records of varied of approved variances. And I think we're trying to catch up to to what they've been doing and I think getting that up onto the web could be part of that.
And I think it's a wonderful resource because seriously, we've, it's part of our history. And it's not written down or located anywhere.
This is the land use map. We have to hit the zoning and the land use map.
Correct.
Yeah. It still has the across the street from me park, which never became park, on Lincoln and Lincoln and Pine, those parcels all have houses on them.
Over there green is.
Yeah.
Right, this map accurately reflects the council's actions.
Right, definitely no, no park there.
Oh, there still can be aspirations.
Be expensive, be an expensive park, man. You got four houses, a hundred, but yeah, anyhow.
Let's see, other items in the planning director's report, although not typed up. At the next meeting in January, I do expect to have for you all an updated division report on activities of the division across the three programs, future, current, and transportation. Last time, that that same report came to the group was in November and I'm trying for it in every other month. It's a three-month look ahead at milestones, it takes a fair amount of time to compile. And every other month and talking to staff seems to be about the right frequency to keep track of things and not overburdening the administration.
How about noting which staff members are on which projects or, you know, what they're doing? I mean, we never seem to know who's working primarily for different things, some of we do.
That's been a, we've actually been evolving some of our staffing model that as we've been increasing the staffing levels to accommodate the increasing workload. The other thing we've been doing is putting multiple staff members on the same project. So instead of one person trying to tackle an entire project, they've actually got backup. We're finding already that with folks on leave, for annual leave or whatever it is, that we found that this provides us some resiliency that a project can keep moving forward.
That's a good idea.
Or if there's a crunch time, we can respond to that, even if, say, two projects that someone's working on both have public distributions. Let's see, the other thing, just to give you all a look ahead, in your printed agendas that are at your seats, the back of it, the agenda includes a look ahead at the commission's work coming up. At your January twenty-second meeting, next meeting, there will be a briefing on the approved Founders Road Construction Management Plan. I think we've talked about before, these are approved administratively. The planning commission has requested to see the approved plan when it was available. And so that'll come before you. Joe Muffler from the Founders Road Project Team will be here to make a presentation and be available to take questions and comments. One of the advantages of doing that briefing at the planning commission meeting is is that it is videotaped. And so people who aren't available to attend or maybe aren't able to attend one of those neighborhood meetings can still understand what changes they should expect to encounter over the over the next few years. February is, a lot of that work is, a lot of that time is dedicated to the CIP. Work session and public hearing followed by action. Demographics chapter, hoping to have projections for the group in February. And then, like I said, March and April being dominated by the West Falls Church Project and the high school project. And these dates are subject to a little bit of fluctuation, but the general sense is that March and April will be predominantly for those projects.
We had talked about last month that March eighteenth would be our retreat or advance. But we can move that to March fourth, I don't think that's a problem if that's open right now. I'd like to keep it open so that we can do that. If that's if that's the best week, that's fine, but that needs to happen sooner than later.
The other thing I am trying to work with the group on is to keep that first work session on the West Falls Church Project as being the only item on the agenda.
Yeah, let's see if we can keep it simple. If other items fall, we'll talk about it, but I wanna probably keep this a single item.
You'll see down in the unscheduled items, and I think this is something to talk about with the group further. But you'll see a number of public projects as well as a couple of private projects. Big Chimneys Park, getting a revised site plan, bringing that to the group. NWOD Trails, that's the other park project, that'll be a a new item for the planning commission, but certainly an old idea, separating out the one trail into two. Those projects, there was a discussion earlier about switching over to more administrative review. Under the the city's zoning ordinance, projects that require a site plan because of their land disturbance but don't include a an amount of building area over fifty square feet or some number, can actually be reviewed and approved by the planning director. And so as we look at this schedule, one of the ideas I've been looking at and exploring as a way to to keep the group on schedule is whether these kinds of park projects could be reviewed at a work session as they normally would be with the planning commission. And if there is a clear list of directions from the planning commission, could that then be simply approved by the planning director? That's one of the things we've been exploring. The other projects are gonna have to come through the planning commission because of the square footage involved. Project that the planning commission probably hasn't heard of, so Byer Volvo, you all had seen and made a recommendation on the variance before. That site plan will be coming through shortly, I believe it's been filed and is being reviewed by staff. Columbia Baptist Church, that has not yet been filed with the city, but there have been pre-application discussions about adding an expanded worship center along the North Washington Street.
Okay. All right, well, you and I will continue our weekly discussions about this for sure. All right, the next item is correspondence. I'm not sure what you wanna do here, I've read the correspondence.
These are included for information only. In the case of the the parking study, that was a request from the planning commission at the recent meet, at the previous meeting to see the latest copy of the presentation.
But I don't, you don't, I mean, right, I saw it, I read it.
No, so it's.
We're not gonna go through it here. Okay.
Uh, let's see, there was a comment from a city resident that was forwarded as addressed.
Yeah, read, Mrs. Winters.
Paul responded quite nicely, answered the question.
Thank you. And then this was a policy resolution, this was just another item included in the packet related to development of the West Falls Church Site. Yeah, I think the, one of the things this talks about, this this comment letter is about the idea of a cohesive vision across the three sites. Obviously, if the staff level of this coordination is continuing, certainly we meet, I think city staff meets weekly, maybe a little less than that, maybe monthly with with Fairfax County staff to talk about their ongoing comprehensive plan amendments for the Virginia Tech sites. And the Womata site, and of course, we're also in communication directly with Virginia Tech staff and Womata staff.
Yeah, there was some article on Falls Church News Press about this, at least the online version. So there sounds like there's potentially some movement on this between Womata and that additional like twenty-four acres, maybe it is. But I might have that number wrong.
Yeah, Womata, the Womata Board acted to to open up a an RFP, a limited RFP to
Rushmark and EYA, right. Okay, great. I think we can move to the next item on that. The next issue is the review of the service survey reports, reserve survey reports, survey results. I'll let you kick this off, Paul, in terms of, you know, the questions and what you were trying to elicit and what you found out.
Sure, so the motivation for this was just to get a sense of, is the planning commission receiving the service it needs from city staff? It's a it's a a good question to ask if you wanna make sure you're performing at expectations. And so the idea was for the survey to cover a range of different work areas that the planning commission's involved in and a number of different ways that the planning commission is served by staff. A Likert scale was used because that's a pretty typical structure for surveys. And then there was a free text option, of course, where where people were free to to expand and explain those those answers or go into other areas. Shayna was actually responsible for, Ms. Schaefer was actually responsible for compiling the results, so maybe I'll I'll leave it to her to summarize the the box as well as the free text.
Right, so I went through and tallied up the results for the for each of the questions, and so you have that here and that's the result. And so you have that here, and that's the result of the survey that we had received last week. But then going down to the free text part, overall, the comments that we got from the commissioners were positive, but there were several comments about making sure that meetings will remain on track, discussions are succinct, and appropriate time is allotted for each agenda item. So staff recommends that the meeting organization be discussed as part of the commission's rules of procedure update, and then we can work on implementing that within the next year. And then in addition to that, the commissioner also commended staff for streamlining processes, rethinking procedures, and better organizing reports. It was also noted that the planning commission advance held in March was well-rounded and productive.
I, I'm very pleased with the results that, it was a lot of work for the staff team to, to make some of those procedural changes internally. The, the, the staff machinery would just, was not designed to deliver packages a week ahead of time. But I thought it was important, especially based on the planning commission's feedback, to get that material out so that, one, you all could be better informed for the meetings, as well as, two, the public could better follow along the work of the group. I was very impressed with how quickly the team was able to rejigger the cogs of the wheels in order to make that happen. Because it involves, one, understanding that the agenda's being set much earlier, so we have to work with the athletes to get the materials on time. We have to complete our DRC's review early. That means better coordination across department lines. We have to get the materials reviewed, reviewed and updated. We have to get them posted. And so it really was all hands at the oars to try and make that shift. I think now that we are into it, I think a lot of people appreciate it. Because we're much more relaxed coming into the meeting. We're not worrying about getting the package materials out. We can actually prepare and have conversations in advance of the, the meeting and the actions. So I'm very excited about it. I'm also happy to see that, for the most part, the, the consensus across the commission is that the group is on a pretty good pace. I think it's also good that some things that were highlighted to work on are things that are, it's a great time to handle those things now as we look at the list of procedure and move into a heavy workload season for the commission. I think it's great that there's this opportunity to say, we like what's going on over here, we want to work more on what's going on over here. I think it's great.
Yeah, I thought the survey results were overwhelmingly positive. For myself, I appreciate everything that staff's doing, and the, the changes that were made over the past year were, I thought, significant and really improved the process. It looked like the one thing, or one area that received the lowest marks was, and I just want to talk about it really briefly here, is the meetings are managed to allow for complete discussion in which everyone has an opportunity to speak, and conversations are not unnecessarily drawn out. So this got the lowest ranking, and it also had some comments in it as well. But I, there was also some discussion that there is not, so here, that people are having an opportunity, too much opportunity to speak, and then we're also getting feedback that says some people are not feeling that they are having a long enough opportunity to speak. So it's sort of trying to find that, that middle ground. I assume this is actually a criticism or constructive criticism towards the way I'm running the, the meeting. I did not interpret this question to mean how staff was running the meeting. So I do want to work on finding that right place. I don't want to have the discussions going on too long, but I don't also want to make people feel like they don't have the opportunity to speak. So I have received actually some very pointed constructive criticism on this point. And if, for those people who, and it was on the, having too much discussion, having the meetings get off track. If there is somebody, you know, quietly and privately who believes they have not had enough opportunity to speak, please let me know. Because I, I do think that that's important, to have everybody have a chance, and I have not felt like I've limited that as the chair. But if I have to somebody, please come see me, you know, privately, it does not need to be in this forum, and, and let me know. Because overwhelmingly, the feedback has been, the meetings are taking a circuitous path. So I was surprised to see the, the scale here. But any constructive criticism, I'm open to and feedback, and any way we can make these meetings better and more streamlined, please let me know. And I think we have made, you know, this goes back to the staff part of it. One of the things that Paul and I had decided to do this past, probably like six months ago, is we put times on these agendas, try to adhere to it. Right now, we are twelve minutes behind schedule, so generally, we followed it. Sometimes we are, sometimes we are way off the mark here, but I, I have felt that over time, we have generally adhered to these. But if there's other suggestions, please let me know, or we can discuss it, how we can streamline these meetings more efficiently at the, the retreat slash advance.
Well, something I, you know, would like to observe on this, I think our, our area that we're meeting in has been more conducive to conversation that we've never had up on the base, you know. It's hard for me to look all the way down to Andy or, you know, or whenever. But I do think this has been a much more relaxed give and take in this area. And really, the staff, I just, I am so pleased with how things have turned around and the type of information and the reports that we get. I just think it's absolutely outstanding, and it's, it's a change that was worth getting to.
On behalf of the staff, I'll say thank you, and then when I'm, when I'm in the staff meeting tomorrow, I'll, I'll pass it along.
So that's.
I think everyone will be happy to hear that.
And I'm serious, you know, I've talked with you before, that, that's just the fact that, you know.
So there's some mixed reviews about this meeting space in terms of whether this was conducive or not. In many ways, it's not going to matter anymore. Coming, you know, a few months from now, we'll be back at city hall. But I think that'll be a challenge to remain, I think there has been, I am one of the people who believes this format has led to more discussion. A lot more informality, for sure. I think it also has led to some of the meetings going longer and some of the conversations sort of straying because it has felt more conversational than on the, the dais. But we will, we'll have a whole new set of challenges in terms of making the meetings run efficiently. Or I should say, I should have, I'll have these challenges over the next year as we move back to the old space and all in a line and, and try to adhere to it. But I think, generally speaking, it will shorten the meetings, it will keep us more focused, but I do think it will reduce some of the conversation. It'll be, some of that stuff will be lost as well, so. It'll be mixed.
Physically, I'll be more comfortable, because we definitely have had issues with the noise from the windows, the drafts, the windows that seem to be open but aren't, and the elevator that takes five thousand years to.
I take the steps now.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I appreciate the constructive criticism, and if there's any more anyone wants to give, please. But overarching, overwhelmingly, the, I think we're, as a commission, really pleased with the work the staff's done, so.
Great, thank you.
And here's the proof. Alright, we have no other work session items. Anything anyone wants to talk about before we adjourn?
Is there an update on Deborah?
Sixteen minutes late.
Deborah, Deborah's still out of the office, working through family health issues.
And I have it on my list of things to, she and I check in every other week, and I, and I need to get to that this week.
Maybe we should take up a private collection and send her some flowers.
What's going on? I don't even know what's happening to her.
Well, she's.
She don't leave, I know that, but.
She's just having some issues with her parents.
She has a.
Yeah, it's not her, it's family.
Yeah, aging parents, and they're both going through health issues.
Yeah, and also multi-generational, it's not just parents.
Yeah, just, she just has a lot of family stuff going on.
Sounds bright.
Yeah.
It does. Alright, we're adjourned. Thank you.